And I saw some very interesting family dynamics and I could just imagine, I never realized that they probably deal with lots of.
Well, he said he wouldn't get a body one time. They went letting him have it. They're going to be gone.
Okay, back there, are you ready? Okay, we're, I think we're a minute early, but we'll go ahead and start.
We're gonna call the meeting to order. We need to get approval of agenda and additions to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have some recognitions which Kelly, I'm gonna let you.
Okay, alright, first of all, we have a special guest with us today, Jo Williams, who is our neighbor friend, she's a member of the Anderson County School Board, but she also serves as our TSBA East Regional Representative, and so she is with us today to give the Board a recognition, so Jo, if you want to come on up to the podium.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Thank you Vice Chairman Price, Board Members and the Superintendent Johnson. First, I want to offer my condolences to the death of the Chairman and your Secretary and the death of their family members. And the real reason I'm here, it's my privilege to be here to present with the TSBA Board of Distinction Award. This award is one of TSBA's most prestigious awards, they write this all down for me by the way. I commend your Board for meeting these requirements in the four key areas, planning, promotion, policy and Board development. As you know, the requirements are extensive and not every Board can qualify as a Board of Distinction, so I, I'm proud that you are a member of the select few. On behalf of the Tennessee School Board Association, I am proud to present the Board of Distinction Award to the Clinton City Board of Education.
Very good.
Congratulations.
I think we all should accept it, it's for the whole Board.
Okay.
I don't like to get my picture made, I might go on a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Well, you're quite a wish, I take it that time to do that.
Well, we imagine you'll go across the street. Will we finish with now you are?
Next up on our recognition portion of our meeting today is, I would like to call all three of our Principals up from our schools. School Board Appreciation Week is January 27th through the 31st, and of course, we do not have a school Board meeting that week, and so they would like to come and present each of you a little something on behalf of their schools to thank you for representing their individual schools and our school district.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sure I'll talk about it today, so. There he is. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. And there's the district, thank you all. Welcome back. Little hug.
Thanks so much.
You know I love getting those.
I know.
Thank you so much.
Curtis, my flower is down there.
Thank you.
He's got plenty of glitter, that's for sure.
Thank you so much.
It's everywhere, once you're up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Well, thank everyone for that, that's really very nice. Okay, now we got a consent agenda, we have the Board Minutes, Executive Committee Report and a surplus list. Do I hear motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. We have the financial report, I don't see Scott.
We are very saddened to report that Scott Ray is not with us tonight, he had a meeting in Nashville, as you know, he serves as our President of the TASBO, which is the School Accountants Association, so he had a meeting in Nashville tonight, and so I know that you are thrilled that the financial report will be coming from Kelly Johnson tonight, so it will be short and sweet, but we have before you the financial reports for the months of October and November, due to the holidays, we have not received the information from the City of Clinton yet to have December's financial reports ready, so we will have that ready for you in February, and then by that point, we should be back on track to where we're not a month in delay. But according to Scott, he's very pleased with every, where we are at this point, everything is right on track, he wanted me to report our cash as we stand right now, or as of November, as compared to 2018, so our available cash in 2018 in November was 3.3 million, and right now, it's just a little bit over 4 million, and so we can say that we are in better financial shape at this point as opposed to last year. Just a couple of funding things that we want to draw your attention to, just to keep you in the loop when we compare 2018 to 2019, we did see a decrease in our student enrollment last school year, and so therefore, our BEP allocation did decrease, so even though Governor Lee gave a increase in BEP funding because our enrollment dropped, we actually, as of so far this year, we have seen almost a $30,000 decrease in BEP money. So while that raises a little bit of concern, the good news is, is that our tax revenue has been increased by about $30,000. So even though we saw that decrease in BEP, fortunately, with some of the development in Anderson County, we are benefiting from that in sales tax revenue, and so that has helped offset. We do expect, we, our enrollment did bump back up some this year, we fluctuated kind of in and out, we've seen a little bit more transience this year than I can say that I think, and Jamie's shaking her head, that we've ever seen in Clinton City Schools, we've been somewhat of the revolving door in some capacity, but we do, we are up where we were last year, so they will recalculate that, and I anticipate seeing a little bit of growth money from BEP, probably sometime in February or March, we should get a report from Mary Andersky, letting us know what our growth money for BEP will be, so I anticipate that we'll recoup a little bit of that this year, so that's kind of where we stand, but as far as all of the line items and where we are, Scott says that we're right in line with where we should be, and he feels good about where we are financially. So it would be my recommendation that we approve, and I did confirm with him that we could do this in one motion, to approve the October and November financial reports.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote first?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Need a motion first.
Need a motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Now, that they're gonna let me ask you to do this?
I'll do it now. David?
Yes.
KK?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business requiring action by the Board, discussion approval of five-year School Board Strategic Plan on First Reading, Appendix D.
Alright, so you'll find the rough draft of our proposed new strategic plan, when I first came on Board, you remember, we did the Vision 2020, where we outlined some of our key strategic goals, and it's hard to believe, but it's now time for us to start working on our next five-year strategic plan. This is required, it's part of TCA, state law, that we are required to have a five-year strategic plan, we are being federally monitored in March, and so this will be part of their federal programming, as they want to see that we are taking action on our five-year strategic plan. So when we had our Board Retreat, we kind of talked about the direction of where we wanted to go with this, and so I've run with the theme of Amplify, and Joey's gonna add some little music, music to the background, but I feel like we've got a solid foundation, we've got the tradition of excellence, we've experienced success, and so now it's time for us to take the good things that we are doing and amplify it, and just make it bigger and better, and so that's where the Amplify 2025 came from, so we found a nice graphic there of the speaker shouting out and amplifying, and our own Gwen Payne helped us with some graphic design and put our logo in the middle of it, but I want to walk you through, it just made sense as we, as the leadership team was talking about what we wanted to do with the five-year strategic plan, it just made sense, like when we do our district plan, our district plan aligns to each one of the three school plans, and so it just made sense that our district plan aligned with the state's strategic plan, and so that our district is moving in the same direction that the state is moving. So, in the new strategic plan, that we hope to have measurable goals on sometime in February, according to the Commissioner, she's focusing on three key areas, she's focusing on academics, well-rounded child, and then teachers, teacher recruitment, teacher retention, and then ensuring that there's an effective educator in each classroom. So we took that theme, and we took those three pillars, or those three areas, and how that applied, and where we wanted to go specifically with Clinton City Schools, so I will just give you the highlights, the highlights of that. Our first goal is gonna be focusing under, the first thing that we did was, we just repeated the vision, mission and beliefs, those have been located on our website since I became Director, so that's pretty self-explanatory, and those are just kind of the functions and the beliefs that us as leadership team hold with how Clinton City functions and what makes Clinton City Schools a successful place to be. So if you look on page four, that is gonna be where our first goal is, and it's gonna be centered around the pillar of academics, and Jamie and I spent quite a bit of time talking about, you know, our Vision 2020 talked about us being in the top 20 districts in the state in ELA in math, and they are now with the new accountability protocol, they are not necessarily looking at reading and math as isolated subjects, they're looking at something called success rate, and so for instance, this year with T and Ready, they're gonna look at your number of on-track and mastered math in ELA, and then they'll divide that by the number of tests that were given, and that's gonna give you your success rate. So therefore, they're not, they're not weighing ELA any heavier in the accountability than they are math, they're putting it all into one success rate percentage. Next year, you know, it will kick in and it will be science, and then the following year, I think we'll add on social studies, but because we have been in the middle of standard revision for science and social studies, we've been doing field tests and that sort of thing, so that's why it is not in the accountability model, but as we look at a five-year plan, that success rate, depending on what subjects count for that particular year, that's why we went with success rate instead of particular subjects. So we want to rematch, we want to be within the top 20 districts across the state in terms of success rate, making sure that all of our subjects are equally weighted on T and Ready. So some of these things are gonna sound real familiar to you, we want to, this is an ELA adoption year, so we want to make sure that we're providing, next year will be math, so these are two key years where we've got to make sure that we are putting rigorous instructional resources in front of teachers. We want to continue, I Ready is doing the magic for us right now, but you know, eight years ago, it was Discovery Ed did the magic for us with diagnostic benchmarks and predictability with T and Ready and Growth, so we want to make sure that we continue to research, to implement a research-based diagnostic benchmark that can predict proficiency and can predict growth. For now, that is I Ready, I don't know what that will be in five years, we've got to make sure we stay on the cutting edge of the best, of the best tool that's out there. We really want to focus on transitioning our instructional coaches, at this point, they're doing a lot of resource-making, a lot of leading professional development, which has been really, really nice, but I think we are to the point where we want to see them move into more of a coaching capacity, where they're in classrooms, more co-teaching, giving teachers feedback, participating in cognitive coaching, just providing more support on a personal level differentiated to our teachers. And 1.4, we want to improve the quality of Tier One instruction, you've heard Jamie talk a lot about RTI and how we move kids in and out of intervention, but if we can really, really focus on strengthening that Tier One, which is just core instruction when they're in the regular classroom, and really focus on differentiation there, our goal is to never have children enter intervention in the first place. So we have some strategies of how we utilize our core instruction time, and then also how we use our 45 minutes of intervention time for on-grade level kids, making sure that we're providing quality interventions for our kids who need interventions, but our kids who are on grade level, that 45 minutes has got to be quality, and we've got to be pushing them and providing enrichment activities and growing our top kids as well. We, so with that said, we want to reduce the variability during intervention time, a lot of our teaching assistants deliver the interventions during our 45-minute intervention time, and they are phenomenal, but we want to make sure that whether you are getting, you know, intervention by TA at North Clinton versus South Clinton versus Clinton Elementary, that there's no variability there in the level of intervention that you are getting, that it's all quality. Then Stacy Lawler, our technology coach and instructor, is doing some research, and we're beginning the conversation now that we are one-to-one, and everybody has their own device, going to a technology class doesn't really seem, we do technology all day long, and they learn a lot of the technology and keyboarding and skills just through integration in the classroom. So we're exploring to move away from a technology class, more towards a computer science class that integrates STEM activities and utilizes our maker space, so Stacy is heavily embedded in researching what that might look like, and how we could kind of transfer, just to stay on the cutting edge of that. And then finally, under academics, I really, we're seeing a lot of the schools around us become certified as a state-certified STEM school, and I think that we have got the teachers who are embracing that style of teaching, we're doing a lot of that anyway, so I would like to at least explore at least one, we've kind of toyed around with that possibly being North Clinton Elementary, but we would like to at least get one, if not more, STEM certified, officially STEM certified. So that is kind of what we are looking at, at Goal One for academics, so any questions or feedback on that?
How do you get certified?
It's a process that the state has, it, I hate to say that it looks like a SACS accreditation because it's not, but it's a similar, no, it's where you just do like a self, you do a self-reflection, and then like a plan of how you're going to, you know, how you're gonna implement the STEM, and you know, you have a leadership STEM, and there's just kind of like Board of Distinction, there's certain criterias that you have to meet, and then they come and evaluate your program, and, but I think that would be good, that would be good for our system to say that we at least have one school. Oak Ridge has an elementary school that is STEM certified, and so you're seeing more schools kind of jump on board with that, so I want to make sure we stay on the cutting edge.
The success rate, the new success rate thing, is this, would that be like the ACT? Like if you do really, really well on one and not so good on the other, you're still gonna have a pretty good success rate? I know you talked about.
Can be, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So it's basically, what it is doing is equalizing the weight of ELA, math, and then on down the road, science and social studies as equal, equally as important subjects. Jamie, did I say that correct?
Yes, it's exactly equal.
Okay. Any other questions on Goal One? Any suggestions at this point for Goal One that we would want to see added? Okay, if we move to Goal Two, this administration, and as should be, we want to couple those high expectations academically, but we cannot expect that if we're not taking care of the social-emotional development of the child. A lot of this, I feel like that Clinton City has kind of been above or ahead of the curve on this work, so some of these things, you're gonna see that we have already started to implement, and we're just wanting to expand, or we're just wanting to make bigger and better, but under the whole child, that we will continue to implement the philosophy of high expectations with an abundance of support, while also providing opportunities to develop social and emotional competencies in an effort to produce a well-rounded student. So here, we're looking at continuing, Jamie does a great job of implementing a strict attendance support program, in fact, she's spent all week working on chronic absenteeism and parent contacts, and setting up our first in-house court that we're gonna be holding at the end of the month for truant children, and so we want to make that bigger and better. We're gonna continue our relationship with Ridge View, where they're offering mental health services to students during the school day, especially for those parents who can't do that outside of the school day. Jamie introduced a few years ago, something called Best Groups that meet after school, and those are students who may have gone through a divorce, or they're struggling with something personal, or they, you know, they have some anxiety, or just some emotional issues, and so this is a time, we've got trained staff that run these groups, and it's, we have seen great, great success from them, and so we want to see those expanded, because those have been done on a limited basis at this point, but we would like to see those expanded, just based on the, on the feedback and the success we have seen from them. We want to continue to expand our fine arts activities and enrichment clubs that we offer, to make sure that we're growing those, those high kids, or even the kids who don't function well academically, but thrive in the area of fine arts, and that's gonna be where their talents and interests lie. Obviously, we want to continue with Blaze-rounded activities, which I'll talk a little bit more about during my Director's Report, but that has just, that has really been just a wonderful thing for us, you can see the kids' self-confidence explode, they feel like they fit in better, we're just seeing lots of success with that. We put under 2.6, just, we do have a full-time nurse in each one of our schools right now, but I felt it was important to keep that in the plan, just if we ever encounter, if we ever encounter a year where we're looking at having to make cuts, which I hope that we don't have to do, this has to remain a priority. We have significant health needs in our schools, and in fact, we even tried, we tried to cut it down to two, because when you look at our total student population, I think the BEP funding is like one nurse for, is it 2,000 kids? 1,000 kids. So technically, by BEP, we get BEP funded for not even one full nurse, but I mean, we have, we have students with significant needs, and we tried to cut that down to two, and let North and South share, and it's just, it's not, the kids deserve to be able to go to a nurse if they need a nurse, and so we just added that position back, but I think that's something that we as a Board need to stay committed, committed to. Continue to develop community partnerships, which Jamie and now Laura Roberts, who coordinates School Health, has done a great job doing, and then as we are seeing more NASS babies come in, and more students with some behavioral needs, we want to really focus on doing professional development and teaching our staff and ourselves about trauma-informed discipline practices, just so that we are providing that therapeutic disciplinary to students throughout the school day. And then 2.9 is probably gonna be the one that might spark the most, the most conversation, we've talked about it for quite some time, but I think we are to the point that we have got to explore and create an alternative regular education program for our students. What we are seeing is, you know, if they meet a federal criteria to be, to be identified as a student with special needs, such as emotionally disturbed, then we can serve them through a smaller setting, through special ed, but what we are finding with a lot of our drug-addicted babies, and a lot of our oppositional defiant, oppositional defiant disorder is not a federal category for special education, and whereas normally, middle schools and high schools dealt with this, we are seeing some significant behavior issues in the elementary setting that is affecting the ability of our teachers to teach and our other students to learn. And frankly, it's not fair for those students to keep them in a regular ed room, because that's not where they're gonna learn best either, but by federal law, if they don't meet criteria for special education, we can't really put them in a smaller group setting at this point, because all of our smaller group settings are considered special education classes. So what this alternative placement program would be, would it be a regular education teacher providing instruction in a smaller, less stimulating environment, in a therapeutic, it should be trauma-informed discipline practices, it would be a lot of restorative practices and a lot of behavior shaping while doing academics in a small, a small group setting, but we are to the point where if we, we could probably fill that class up fairly quickly at this point, and I think it is just one more avenue that we can support kids and give them what they need emotionally and socially, but then we can also, we can also protect what's happening in the regular ed classrooms as well. So that's not something that's gonna happen immediately, but I do think that we are very, very close to having that conversation, that that probably is going to be a reality, and the majority of your, I mean, all of your larger systems have it, Anderson County has it, Knox County has it, we just have never had it up to this point, because we've been so small that we've been able to, you know, we've been able to deal with, you know, individual students on an individual basis, but I think that we are about there, so I think within five years, we'll probably see the need for that.
If we were to have that Board, would we have it at?
Well, that would be a discussion, we'd have to look at placement, I mean, we'd have to look at where we think that we have room, so I don't think we could answer, we can answer that question now, I mean.
You said a bunch of kids, how many kids you think, if we were doing it today?
If we were doing it today, I would say we'd probably have, what, six, seven students in there right now?
So, Kate, there's six?
Yes.
And you would combine those?
Is it just, that's the same as an hour at a school, right?
Yes.
Similar, I mean, just you use a different.
Yeah.
And it's a necessity.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
I can tell you about dealing with some that have been emotionally disturbed, it hurts the teacher, it hurts the other students, it's just a real need, and I'd like to see us do it way longer for five years.
Yep, okay.
Now.
I know you said you couldn't tell, but would that be like one, maybe one classroom at a school? And, because if you didn't have that many, you wouldn't.
It would be much like we run our diagnostic class, at this point, it'd be one classroom that would serve all three schools, and then we would just, if that's where the child, and really, when you look at it, yes, it does protect the teacher, it does protect instruction, but it's also, it's in the best interest for that child, because if that child's not being successful in the regular ed classroom with 20 other kids, it's up to us to try to find another avenue that we can make them more successful, so it would, my thinking at this point, it'd be one classroom for the whole entire district housed at one of the schools, and that would just determine, you know, where we have the space for the classroom. But usually, what it would be, would be a classroom teacher and probably a teaching, full-time teaching assistant in there, and then they would work on both social and emotional goals as well as academic goals, with the, with the, you know, intent that you work them back into the regular classroom, it's not a forever placement, it is just until you can get some behaviors and some things under control.
I'm good, can I go back and ask a question about, first thing you talked about?
Uh huh.
If it's on the Chairman, you talked about the top 20?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a lot? Do we not need to be a little higher than that? I mean, like in the top 10 or top 15? I'm sure y'all thought it well over, that's why I'm asking the question.
I would love to be, when we looked at our rankings for this year, we typically perform, and Jamie, you can speak to this, with our ELA and math, we hover around, you know, sometimes, in individual grade levels, like, you know, with sixth grade, two years ago, we were second in the state, but when you lumped three through six, we hover sometimes in the low twenties, sometimes in the high teens, but when you lump science and social studies in on that, we're usually in the upper twenties, thirties, out of 100.
I think it's 30 more this year.
Okay.
So I was trying to make it realistic that we could, but if we want to shoot for 15, we can put whatever you all want to on there, you know, we're gonna try to get as high as we can.
No, I'm not saying doing that, I just was, just asked a question, she answered. Thank you though.
Okay, so on to, oh, we're still on two, I'm sorry, on page six, a few more things, just as we look at those behavior needs contracted with an outside behavior specialist, which we have begun to do, and we're seeing great success with that, and then I would really like, and I'm not sure we could ever pull it off, but I would really like for us to explore, explore the possibility of having some sort of onsite healthcare option for our staff and students. We're seeing lots of, and Jamie's begun to do some research on this for us, but there are some schools that have a nurse practitioner that is available for kids, a lot of the kids with attendance issues, the parents keep them home because they think they're sick, and then they don't really have the resources to go to the doctor, and so sometimes we're racking up, you know, absences, when really they're okay, they just have, you know, a little runny nose and could probably stay at school, but a nurse practitioner would be better qualified to be able to make that decision. And then, you know, staff, we had a partnership with Clinton Drug for quite a while, where our staff could run there, you know, on their break, and, you know, it's hard for a teacher if they just know that they have an ear infection, you know, but they gotta make a doctor's appointment and go and sit there and wait forever, they've gotta take half a day, yeah, they miss the whole day, and then, you know, we know that the instruction's not as quality with subs, and then they're stressed out making lesson plans, and, and so I would like for us just to explore if that could ever be a possibility for us.
That'd be a lot of liability though, if you're sending students to somebody that's onsite.
It is run-through, Jamie, do you want to talk a little bit about how that works?
So, here County deals in that heavily, and parents filed a waiver at the beginning of the year, and before the child was ever allowed to see their healthcare provider, and they
Just as we look at those behavior needs contracted with an outside behavior specialist, which we have begun to do, and we're seeing great success with that. And then I would really like, and I'm not sure we could ever pull it off, but I would really like for us explore, explore the possibility of having some sort of onsite healthcare option for our staff and students. We're seeing lots of, and Jamie's begun to do some research on this for us, but there are some schools that, that have a nurse practitioner that is available for, for kids. A lot of the kids with attendance issues, the parents keep them home because they think they're sick. And then they don't really have the resources to go to the doctor. And so sometimes we're racking up, you know, absences when really they're okay, they just have, you know, a little runny nose and could probably stay at school. But a nurse practitioner would be better qualified to be able to make that decision. And then, you know, staff, we had a partnership with Clinton Drug for quite a while, where our staff could run there, you know, on their break. And, you know, it, it's hard for a teacher if they just know that they have an ear infection, you know, but they got to make a doctor's appointment and go and sit there and wait forever. They've got to take half a day off. Yeah, they miss the whole day. And then, you know, we know that the instruction's not as quality with subs, and then they're stressed out making lesson plans. And so I, I would like for us just to explore if that could ever be a possibility for us.
That'd be a lot of liability, though, if, if you're sending students to somebody that's onsite.
It is run through. Jamie, do you want to talk a little bit about how that works?
So here county deals in that heavily, and parents file away for the beginning of the year and before the child was ever allowed to see their healthcare provider. And they do a phone call to make sure they want an appointment for that day, and their insurance is, is on file, and the school is not involved in any of the, the billing aspect of it. It's done.
It's more of a contracted service. So that person is not our employer, or not our employee, rather.
Not our employee. And I think, when you think about the community who would want to take patients away from local businesses, which that's something we talked about, if there's a need for it, and clinics are full, it might just send them in and explore.
You know, Isen Automotive does that. They have their own clinic onsite.
Sure, really, yeah.
They sure do. They do everything right there onsite.
I think Anderson County Courthouse at one point had that as well.
They still do.
Do they still have it?
Yeah.
I've never heard of it.
Yeah. Isen has a doctor and a couple nurses. You get hurt there, you get toward the first place you go.
Yeah.
To their health place.
So we're, we're just exploring. So I just put there explorer. I don't know if that's something we'll ever do, but we want to learn some more information about it, just to, to see if that's an area that we want to go. And then expand college and career exploration. And then the other thing is we, as we move down with the behavior class, with the, with the NASS babies that we're seeing, and just with the transience that we're starting to see, and it's not only Clinton City thing, we're seeing it in districts all across the state of Tennessee. One of the things that we are missing within Clinton City schools, and it wouldn't need to be a full-time position, but we do not have a social worker. And so right now, Jamie, Suzanne, Lori, and the principals are working really, really hard, you know, to try to link community resources to help parents and to try to, you know, to help pay this water bill and to pay this electric bill. And so a social worker can help kind of be a liaison between community resources and what students and families need, and also help us with some attendance supports and down the road, I think. In fact, we wrote a grant for that, actually, through the state last year, and we felt really, really good about it and had some wonderful plans for North Clinton, and we were not able to, we were not chosen for the grant. So we were super sad about that, but. So those are some whole child things that we are doing. Any questions or anything you all want to see added or concerns on that? Okay, so then goal three, which aligns with the state plan, the last pillar that she has is teachers. This is going to sound very similar to our Vision 2020, but it's constant work because your door, I mean, our staff doesn't look the same as it did last year. Things happen and people get transfers and move. And so this is ongoing work. So this is going to sound very similar to what we had last year, but we will ensure that there's an effective educator in every classroom across the district, reducing the variability between schools and grade levels. We did add, as evident by multiple lens data focus. We spent a lot of time, because in our last plan, it was by level of effectiveness on team evaluations. And that team evaluations is taking observations and some test data in a crazy formula, and then equating a teacher to either a level one, two, three, four, or five. While that is one piece of information, we know that like our second grade teachers, they're absorbing 35% of that level of effectiveness is for value-added of kids they never touch. And so it's not really fair to judge if they're having to take 35% of something they really don't truly impact. So we wanted to provide a multiple lens, because we have, we've got iReady data, we've got classroom observations, we've got attendance, we've got attitude and professional learning communities, we've got leader, we've got professionalism rubric. We've got so many things that we can use, that we want to make sure that we are judging the effectiveness of teachers in a fair way that works best for them. So six different action steps on that. We are going to provide training and continue our work in teacher collective efficacy. And basically, in a nutshell, that just means that teachers have that inner belief that what they do matters, and that they have the ability to truly change the trajectory of a teacher's life. And we have learned that that is the number one. We know that the teachers and the instructors is the number one indicator for student success, but also the teacher fundamental belief that they can make a difference in every student's lives. They are learning is the number one indicator of student success. So we want to work on that. While we do provide mentoring, and we feel like we're so small, we provide support for teachers, we do not have a formal teacher induction program. And so we, we do things a certain way in Clinton City that makes us successful. And what we have heard from teachers who come on board is that because we provide so much support, that sometimes that can be very overwhelming to a teacher when they first come. And we try to give them all the information at one time, because we want them to be successful. And sometimes that is very overwhelming, and you can only digest so much at one time. And so Abby Kidwell has actually begun this work and will continue this work and hopefully get it formalized next year, where we put all of our new teachers through a systematic training to where by the end of that first year, they have been given a series of both whole group professional development and then also differentiated professional development that really helps get them, get them onboard without trying to overwhelm them. And then 3.3, I know this is the goal of the board, but we want to continue to increase staff salaries. We have made significant gains in that over the past three or four years. And I think it's important that we continue in that work. Providing differentiated professional learning to teachers, creating a teacher leader program. We want to keep our highly effective teachers. It's always been the path of if you are a highly effective teacher, you usually go get your admin degree, you become an instructional coach, you become a principal, you kind of move up into administration. But we really want to look at how we can create some sort of teacher leader pipeline, where some of our best teachers stay in the classroom and work with kids, but they're rewarded for that. And so we want to explore that. And then we want to also, we've begun this work, but we need to formalize it a little bit more, formalize our own administrator pipeline. You know, we all won't be sitting in these seats 15 to 20 years from now, and so we need to make sure that we are growing people within that are embedded in the Clinton City culture and our tradition of excellence that can come in and be administrators in the future. So that is our work for teachers. Any questions on that, or any concerns, input, anything you want to add?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
And then finally, we added facilities. And you know, this is a moving target, because it just depends on where our, where our next, where our, our next crisis is. But we put the guiding principle there. Basically, we want to engage in a proactive maintenance, repair, and improvement practices to provide school campuses that are safe and conducive for learning. And so we're going to continue with, we do, we can borrow money for growth, but for repair, we want to use existing money. So for, we kind of outlined what we project. This is, I will say, is only a projection. It is certainly not set in stone, and I can guarantee you it probably will change. But right now, Scott's thinking is, of course, 2021 is going to be our CES edition. Then the next year, he wants to look at replacing boiler at CES and the CES roof replacement over the main two floors, the terrazzo floors, which would be the kindergarten through third to the fourth grade classrooms. Then the following year, finally, our CES auditorium renovation. And then 23, 24, CES roof replacement. This would be the gym and the west wing to our new addition. And then 24, 25, the auditorium and cafe at CES. And then 25 through 30, sometime in there, we're going to need to replace the NC, the North Clinton HVAC units and the ballasted roofing at North Clinton. And so I just put a asterisk down here that these projects are just projections. You know, I don't know with these new developments that we're seeing, we, we still do not know if some of these subdivisions are going to be annexed or not, but it's still kind of up in the air. So we don't really know what our projected enrollment would be. But if we did have to add on somewhere else, we have added on to Clinton Elementary all that we can add on to. And so if our enrollment just happened to spike, then South Clinton would probably be the next place that we would do some classroom additions. So I added that on there. And so that is kind of the proposed five-year strategic plan. So any input or concerns, anything you want to add on facilities?
Auditorium might be number one.
Agree, agree.
It's dangerous. Well, I don't mean it, I mean the chairs, or that's...
They, we are projected, Scott has been in close contact with the architects, and we're projected in the spring. And so we are still on track, we hope, to have it finished, hopefully by the beginning of next school year, if not by the beginning, then very soon after the beginning.
Sounds good.
So what I thought we would do, this, we can either approve it on first and second reading, we can approve it on first reading, and if you want to think about it and have any additions and come back for second reading next month, we can handle that however you want to.
I have a motion as how to handle the five-year school board strategic plan.
I suggest approving on first and second, both. I mean, I don't, not unless we want to wait on 10 to come back, just do it on first? Make a motion to approve it on first reading, so we can wait on the...
I have a motion, I need a second. Pick up.
Second.
We have first and second, any discussion? Okay, do we have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we have approved the first reading. And now it's time for reports from the principals.
All right, Ms. Bonesteel, you're in front, so we'll call you on it.
So we started out this week with combination ELA and math PLCs with all the teachers during their planned time. And we looked at some iReady information, some diagnostic and some grouping information that we had gotten to decide how we could improve our small groups and differentiate instruction as we're kind of moving into that crunch time, we're in the second half of the year. So we had some really good discussion in our meetings this week. Tomorrow, the Clinton Fire Department is visiting South Clinton, and they are bringing a fire simulation trailer that all of our kids get to go through, so that they get to learn if they were in, you know, if there were a fire, heaven forbid, in their home, how they could safely maneuver and, and get out safely. So all the kids are going to get to go through that tomorrow. So that's happening all day long from 9:30 until 2:30. So we're excited about that. On the 13th, we have Class Pictures and Legends is going to come and do that for us. On the 16th, next week, we're going to have PLC meetings with teachers again. Just a little bit to further what we did this week, preparing for testing, looking at what we need to do to maximize our student growth between January and May, and how to utilize that instruction time that Kelly talked about during intervention. What are we doing with our tier-one kids to really enrich them and push them? So making plans for all that. The 17th will be our monthly assembly, and the 21st, we'll have our RTI meetings. And then on the 31st, this year, we've historically in the past had a spring dance for our fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. And we just decided this year as a leadership team that everything gets so busy in May that we were going to move it to January, and we're going to call it the snowball. So we're excited about that, our winter dance. We have lots of things going on after school at South Clinton, and lots of things that are continuing into the second semester. So our Bridge Steam Club is going to continue. Art Club for grades first, second, and third is going to begin this month. So we had it for our older students, fourth, fifth, and sixth last semester. So our littles are really excited that now it's their turn. They get to have Art Club. And we're going to continue fifth and sixth grade band, our Orphan Ensemble, and the Blaze Book Club. So lots going on in the afternoons at South Clinton.
Thank you, Ms. Bonesteel. Ms. Monica?
So for December, we had some fun, exciting events. We had our, on the 10th, we had our Fine Arts and Literacy Night. We read books, made ornaments and cocos, and had cookies and cocoa. And we had our book fair. We had about 50 guests. It was on a night where we had a snow day the next day, so we had a beautiful snow setting with that, where we made ornaments and listened to some music. We had our 13th, on the 13th, we had our Christmas lunch, about 54 family members that visited. And we had our Peppermint Village shop that was open for students on the week of the 16th. We wanted to make sure and thank the Rotary. For the 17th, we had a, students visit the Rotary Christmas party and had our winter musical later that night with singing and dancing. We actually held it at North Clinton this year instead of at Clinton City Auditorium, and it just worked out nicely that particular time. On the 18th, we had some winter benchmark data, data meeting, and we had phenomenal growth in both ELA and math. We were really surprised and excited about that. On the 19th, we had our PTCC meeting, and we want to make sure and say a special thanks to Faith Promise, Rusty Wall Chevrolet, St. Mark's, ORAU. It's not, it's not Antioch anymore.
Milestone.
Milestone, thank you. Mount Olive, First Baptist, some anonymous staff members, and Rotary served 165 of our students for Christmas this year. And on the 3rd, we had our second grade teacher on our collaborative day presented with our ELA coach, Suzie Boyd, and Shawna Gagos, presented some foundations activities, which is our primary phonics program, to our teaching assistants and our pre-K teachers and our interventionists. And it was a really exciting time. Our pre-K teachers are wanting some more information and possibly some more materials at some point in the future, so that we can continue, start that phonics instruction earlier even. On the 8th, we had our ELA and math PLCs combined, and we were looking ahead to our next writing assessments and iReady teacher use of data. So we had some exciting finds that our teachers were using their weekly reports of instructional use to really facilitate and drive some instruction with that. On the 16th, we'll have our class pictures, and on the 21st, we will have our parent conference night, and the 27th, we will have our PTCC, and on the 31st, we will have our RTI meetings and rearrange groups based on our winter benchmark data.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Rell. Also, I wanted to let you know that there was an anonymous community donor that gave her library $1,000. And, so, yes, and so Janie Jackson was super excited about that. There was another donor that also gave the art program $500. So we've got lots of community, community support rolling in. All right, last but not least, Ms. Sharp.
Glad to see you well and back.
Thank you, I'm glad to be back. We are getting back into the swing of things, and we're hitting the ground running. Excuse me. We're glad to have Ms. Kidwell back. I want to recognize that she's here tonight. If you come to Clinton Elementary, you'll see we have a new resource officer. His name is Justin Byrd. He was there on Monday and had to call NSIC on Tuesday and Wednesday because he already had a stomach virus. So while it's not funny, welcome to Clinton Elementary School. His immune system, we'll have to get used to that. Yeah, it was, it was interesting. We had principal visits today from different schools. We had two principals, one from Jacksboro and one from Huntsville Elementary. We also had the PD Director for Union County and Greg Wilson with the Elgin Foundation. They came to tour our school, and they also got to see our PLCs that were today. And they were very impressed with our teachers and how much they use their data and reflect on our, on their data and implement practices based on the data. And they're not waiting to be told what to do. They knew immediately what they needed to do and already had a plan. So they were impressed with that, they were impressed with our schedule, they were impressed with some after-school things that we've got going on. So that's, it was just nice to be able to brag on Clinton Elementary and Clinton City today. We did have, just like I said, our PLC meetings today, where we combined math and ELA, and we looked at iReady, we looked at pass rates, and we also looked at instructional grouping profiles. We talked about mid-year data, and we compared to see where the kids were. And so when, after they looked at that and found common deficits, we asked them to target a group, and they, we gave them a reflection. They're going to come back next Thursday, ready to talk about the plan. And most of them could have written that plan right then and there. But one thing that we found is in our PLC, sometimes we focus on group effort. What does the grade level need to do? So the reflection gives them a little bit of an individual accountability piece with it. We asked them to do that in the team rubric. You know, everybody in the group has a role. So we've asked the teachers to come back with their individual plan and grade level plan next week. On the 23rd, we'll have data meetings, and on the 30th, we'll have RTI meetings. On the 13th, report cards go home. I can't believe it's already that time. The 15th, we'll have a leadership team meeting at 3:15. I sent out a mid-year survey of what's going well at CES, and then what do they feel like could use improvement to help make our school successful? So we will discuss that and school improvement. So we will discuss that in school improvement. We have an incentive committee, committee meeting on the twenty-second, where we will discuss our iReady incentive for second semester. We'll have PTCC on the twenty-third at three-fifteen. And then also, we are having, I don't know if Kelly will talk a little bit more about this, a family fun night at the Clinton High School Sports Complex. And then the thirty-first, we are supposed to have the fire safety trailer visit that Ms. Bonesteal is having at South tomorrow, but they called today, may have to reschedule. But we will have them at Clinton soon, and we have an assembly at eight-fifteen. So, thank you.
Busy places. Lots of, lots going on. That concludes our principal reports.
Right now, it's time for our director report.
So a couple of, your director report's in the back of your packet, so you already have that. Most of this stuff has already been said by principals, so we'll breeze right through it. But I want to start off with a short recognition today. As you know, our own Jenna Sharp was chosen as the East Tennessee Principal of the Year. And she, then she went on to the state level and served as one of nine finalists for the state principal of the year. And then she came back and a couple of days later, discovered that she had actually been chosen as one of Knoxville's forty-under forty. And so Knoxville, a magazine in Knoxville, remind me the name of the magazine.
It's just for Knox.
New Sentinel?
New Sentinel.
So Knoxville New Sentinel. They choose forty people under the age of forty that have made strong community contributions and are just kind of up and coming in the professional world. And so Jenna Sharp was chosen as one of those. So we certainly, she is just, she has been amazing just in time I've been here watching her grow into a wonderful leader. And, and it could have easily gone to Ms. Bonesteal and Ms. Rael as well. We just have quality principals within our schools. But Ginger Leach, who is our executive director over the core office, came by today and toss, the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, has made her a special award along with an envelope. I'm not quite sure what's in it, but I'm sure it's something fancy and fun. And so Jenna, if you will come up, because David is on the end and because he is one of your school board representatives, I'm gonna let him present that to you. So congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Did you say a few words?
I just thought about the opportunity to be able to brag on our school system. We are small, but we are mighty. And so I love the opportunity to brag. The attention's a little different for me. But if it gets our school system out there and our school out there and how great we are, then it's worth it all. But thank you all.
I heard David Quiner said he's gonna buy a few more coupon books for you as part of recognition. As part of recognition.
I told her, take the, take the plaque, throw it in the garbage, keep the lime.
Teachers don't get many awards.
They don't. That will hang in her office. A couple of other things. Yes, Abby Kidwell is back with us after spending a semester home with baby, baby Penny. And so I think we might be a little bit more excited about her being back than she is about leaving her baby at home. But a little tear for the first day, but we're starting to see smiles out of her again. So that's, that's a good thing. But we're certainly glad to have her back. Lauren Witt, who filled in for her as, she's one of our sixth grade teachers. She did a tremendous, tremendous job supporting Ms. Sharp the first semester, so we appreciate her. As I said, plans are moving ahead with the Clinton Elementary expansion. Scott's working close with the architects to kind of finalize a few details. And then that should go out to bid very soon with a projection of starting that in the spring. Our Blaze projects this semester are gonna include bowling and track. And then I wanted to kind of let you know that we have applied for an education, health, and wellness grant to begin a Blaze archery program for fifth and sixth graders. It's an eight-week program that teaches archery skills. And Terry Curly has agreed to go, it's sponsored by the TWRA. And so it's a very scripted program, and she'll have to go get trained and be certified to teach it. But we have applied for that grant, and we will find out within a few weeks if that, if that was chosen as one of the grants. So hopefully, we will get that and can begin that as well. Our Ace of Shakes graduation for fourth grade is tomorrow, and that has been another successful, successful program. This year, Lieutenant Campbell's gonna come back, and he always is good to come back and see how the kids have grown. And they'll get their luggage tag graduation present tomorrow. And then Jenna talked about the principals who visited Clinton Elementary, but we've got more coming to South Clinton and North Clinton. And so we were contacted by Robbie Norman, who was principal at Bricky McLeod Elementary in Knox County for quite some time. But she knew the success of Clinton City schools, and she has organized these visits for this work group. And she specifically wanted them to come to Clinton City based on our success. And so happy that we get to showcase all three of our schools in the month of January with them. And then we are hosting the first family fun night at the Hollingsworth Sportsplex in January. And this is gonna be a fun night. We have received so many reservations that we are so excited about this. But Caleb Tipton, Tipton at the high school has just been remarkable to work with, and he's so excited. We have found that a lot of our parents don't, they don't even know where the high school is. And so the fact that we can showcase our own city high school and the good things that it has to offer and kind of get them, get them, their eyes set on Clinton High School is, it's gonna be a really neat thing. But we've got activity stations set up. The PE teachers and Laura Roberts, the coordinator of school health, have planned it, and it's gonna be a fun night. They're gonna come in with armbands, and they get to work their way through. It's gonna be basketball, yoga. It's gonna be a ninja course. It's gonna be some balancing activities. It's gonna be all kinds of fun, fun stuff. And so that's gonna happen at the Sportsplex in January, January twenty-third, correct? And then just finally, since we won't be together during school board appreciation week, I just personally want to extend my appreciation to each of you for all that you do for Clinton City schools and for me personally. There is not a better school board to work for, and I appreciate the fact that you care about us as people first and that you help us take care of the fine people that are sitting out there and then the wonderful teachers and staff that show up every day. It's just a, it's a great place to be, and we just appreciate all of your support and the good work that you do on behalf of boys and girls.
Well, there's not a better school system.
Agree. Agree. What's our hashtag, girls? We love, we love us. We love us. We say that all the time. We love us. Can you say it with a little more passion? Yeah, I don't know what to say about.
That's what I thought.
Well, we can do CCS twenty-four seventeen, but we.
That's a bad one.
Yeah, yes. That concludes my director report.
Do you have any other reports or?
That's it.
Discussion? Okay, I adjourn this meeting.
You wanna hit it?
Turned. Where is it?